Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce John Sweeney, Lackawanna County Sheriff's Department. John is an Army Infantry Combat Veteran, and he has achieved the rank of Corporal and served three years, including nine months' tour in Afghanistan. Medals of Merit include Army Commendation Medals. John, thank you for your service. The floor is yours. And like you said, keep the blue line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please remain standing. Our country has had a horrible situation going Florida. You know, it's like bi-weekly that there's school shootings. This last one was so horrible, 17 students and staff that lost their lives. You know, this is something like, you know, God, you want to just go home and just hug your children and think about those parents that were there who were looking for their children, and they weren't able to hug their children because there were some of the children that died. You know what must have been going through their minds? It's just horrible. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for the Marjory Stormin Douglas High School students and staff. Student Cara Lauren, 14-years-old. Coach Aaron Feis, 37. Student Jamie Gutenberg, 14. Student Nicholas Dort, 17. Student Elisa Aliff, 14. Scott Beagle, teacher, 35. Student Meadow Pollock, 18. Christopher Nixon, Athletic Director, 49. Student Luke Hoyer, 15. Student Cameron Scrupan, 16. Student Gina Meltado, 14. Student Alex Schrader, 14. Student Peter Wang, 15. Student Alina Petty, 14. Student Martin Dequon Algennioho, 14. Student Helena Ramsey, 17. Student Jaquan Oliver, 17. Keep them in their family and friends and our thoughts and prayers. This has been a horrible tragedy, and please, we hope that this could, this never happens Please keep their family and their friends and their thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to announce that we actually, we had an active shooting, active shooter seminar up at Marywood College, and we're actually going to bring the sheriff and his deputies in that did a fabulous job. I'm not going to get too deep in it because we're going to bring them in next month, but it was great. It was really good for our staff, and it's horrible to say that, you know, 20 years ago, you wouldn't even think that you'd have to be prepared for something like this, but this is what's going on in our world. And the sheriff deputies did a great job, but we'll talk a lot more about that next month with the sheriff here. At this time, I'd like to bring this Wednesday, February 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting to order 10:00 a.m. at the Commissioners Conference Room. I'd like to make a motion for the reading of the minutes. Do I have a second? Roll call?
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. We have some presentations, 18-0035, and we have a check for Meals on Wheels. Do I have something? Because it's all, um... I'm very, very proud of the fact that the $4,000, this was money that was raised at our Senior Health Fair. I'd like to thank our staff, Fran Pantuso, Joe D'Arenzo, our community relations people, all of our staff that got involved. It was a great day, and it was a great day for all of our seniors. And we have a check for you today.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, all of the commissioners, and the staff and residents. On behalf of the clients, our wonderful clients of Meals on Wheels, we are so grateful for the continued support of not only the commissioners, but the many agencies, the Agency of Human Services of Aging, who really help us fulfill our mission every day. We are serving over 500 clients in Lackawanna County, as well as serving a pet food program, community health initiatives, to help our clients live and age better in their homes. We are incredibly grateful to be here again, and we just thank you all for your continued support.
Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you for the work that you do. Proud to be a part of it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thanks for the work you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Like I said, first and foremost, I'd just like to thank our staff for the great job they put on with the Senior Health Fair. But for those in the viewing audience, please remember, you know, Meals on Wheels is always looking for donations, and they're always looking for drivers.
And volunteers, yes.
And volunteers. And as much as the food is nutritional and, you know, and it provides nutrition for the seniors, the fellowship, the friendship that they receive from the individuals that come to their house, it matters just as much.
For many of our clients, and unfortunately, more than any of us really like to have to say, it's the only human contact they receive in a day.
Phone's not ringing.
The phone is not ringing, and if it is ringing, it's fraud calls. I mean, this is the world we're living in, so for many of our clients, that's the only person they see. Many of their family have passed on, or their children, or nephews and nieces have left the area. So we are part of a network that really provides support to keep them in the home. Many of them, homes they've lived in that were their parents', and they raised their family there, and that's where they want to remain. And that's what we try to do on a daily basis. Feed, you're feeding their bodies, but you're also feeding their heart. And that's something we are proud, my team, my volunteers. We come with a smile every day, and we love what we do.
Talk about the phone number. Where can they get ahold of you if they want to get involved, they want to give a donation?
Absolutely. 570-346-2421, or visit us on Facebook, Meals on Wheels Community Services of NEPA, or on the web, www.meelsonwheelsnepa.org. We also love to have donations of time, as well as pet food. We serve, of our 500 clients, 90 of them are receiving pet food every month now. And that pet food, it allows them to keep that supportive animal. Studies have shown that being able to have that cat or dog helps our clients age gracefully and with that love, that companion animal. And it reduces food sharing. So they're not sharing their food with their pet. They're eating a nutritious meal, because, you know, Fluffy, we have a tendency, oh, cute Fluffy, I'm going to share your food, but we can't do that when we start to age. We really need to take care of ourselves, and that's what we help to provide.
And what's nice about animals, like, in the morning, gives them reason to get out of bed and feed their animal and stuff.
It does. It gives them a purpose, and we're so thrilled to be able to help them do that.
Very nice. We have a check if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you.
Good hour, you. Just feel short when we do this.
(laughing).
In the new building, we have to make sure this is right.
I think you want us to bring that up.
Too far.
Yeah, not too far. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, 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 two, three. Perfect.
Congratulations. Again, anyone that would like to volunteer for Meals on Wheels, please contact them. Okay, at this time, 18-0036, Good Works in Lackawanna County, DePietro's Pharmacy. Tom DePietro, would you like to come up to the podium? Tom, talk to us about your business and everything else, and all the different awards that you've received, and, you know, it's...
I had the opportunity to open a pharmacy in Lackawanna County five years ago, and, you know, with the support of our community, it really has flourished. And, you know, what gets me out of bed in the morning is truly the ability to give back to so many different organizations. And not for recognition, but just to be able to help those in need, and there's so many great organizations in our county, and that's truly what gets me out of bed in the morning. So I thank you guys for recognizing that today here.
Tom, let's talk about some of the different organizations you're involved in. You help out with a lot.
Yeah, so there's quite a bit. I have the pleasure to work with Andy Wallace at the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute through the Spirit of Hope Gala, which all of that money stays local for cancer in Lackawanna County. Jog for Jude will be coming up, the Jude's Act Foundation for Southern Infant Det syndrome. The American Cancer Society is another one that's close to my heart. And then just being an advocate in the community for health screenings and other initiatives that kind of incorporate pharmacy. So I'm able to, you know, sit around, sit around the room with leaders of this county, leaders like Judge Berace, who is so instrumental to many things in our community. We were gathered last night at a meeting. So it's rewarding to end the day and see other aspects of challenges that people face, you know, whether it's a judge or whether it's an elected official as you guys, you know. So I appreciate you recognizing me, but what I would say on behalf of my family, my wife is from Florida, we raised our, we're raising our daughter here. I mean, Lackawanna County is the best place to raise a family, and it's that because of the difficult decisions that you guys make as elected officials and public servants. So on behalf of my family, I would like to thank you guys for everything you do, and not only the commissioners, but everybody around this table, and, you know, the likes of Judge Berace and the Sheriff's Office. You know, thank you guys for all the work you do.
Commissioner Cummings.
Well, I appreciate the work that you've done, and I also appreciate the fact that you've joined us in our opioid task force to help us out in any way you can. And I thank you for getting involved in that and helping us out and getting that word out and taking all the initiatives you have. I know you were involved in the drug buyback, or the drug, bringing them back into the county. Do you have a drop box at your place?
Yeah, we have a drop box in our pharmacy, and I've been working with State Representative Kevin Hagerty, who is introducing a bill today in the House that's going to hopefully require every pharmacy in the state of Pennsylvania to be required to take drugs back. So currently, it's an option. We offer it in our pharmacy, and the courthouse has a drug take-back box. It's my belief and through my advocacy with State Representative Hagerty that hopefully it will be mandatory in all pharmacies across the state of Pennsylvania.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the work you've done on that and for joining us on panels and out in the public speaking about the issue, because we need professionals such as yourself to join in and help us out, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much. It's my honor.
You're welcome.
Commissioner O'Malley.
You've been doing a great job for many years, not just with the pharmacy, but with all the organizations you're involved with, and it's been a pleasure to know you for a long time, and keep up the good work, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And really, but thank you for your philanthropy. You really are involved. Business of the Year, Best Practice, it's amazing. And I know that this is about all the good works that you do outside of the pharmacy, but you have to always go back to that. You mean, you have that type of pharmacy that's family-friendly. Your, the people, the citizens that come to see you trust you with their health. You mean, they know that you're giving them the right script, you're giving them, you know, telling them what they can and cannot take it with, and you're making sure that they're safe. Probably half of your people are the same people that you've had for like the, since you started.
Yeah, yeah, it's been an amazing journey.
But, no, it is. It is amazing, and, but it's just the fact that, you know, I mean, when you work in a full-time business like that, by, you know, I mean, you know, a lot of times, you're there all the time, but then after work, you make sure that you go out and you give back, and that's what today's about. Today's work, Good Works, is about how you give back to the community. Congratulations on the pharmacy, but how the good work that you good, do good, the good work you do in Lackawanna. And also, I want to bring up, his pharmacy is one of the first pharmacies that actually had self-contained medication in plastic packs about six years ago, was that?
Yes, and actually, thanks to Lackawanna County, I was able to secure a...
Community reinvestment grant.
A community reinvestment grant to buy a special packaging machine where we organize and package patients' medications based on day and time of dose. Generally, it's utilized for nursing home patients, but we made a commitment to our patients at home who, as the representative for Meals on Wheels said, oftentimes don't have any interaction and no one to help them.
The bingo cards, or are they...
No, well, it's actually strip packaging.
Really?
So it's a machine, so it's a bit more techni, more technological than blister cards.
You go for a tour, you got to see the machine.
Similar to like a vitamin packet that you would buy at a store, like a vitamin packet.
Oh, with all of them in a little, yeah, got it.
Yeah, so it's an easy tear-open package.
Interesting. Do you give those, do you take those back if their meds are changed?
Yes.
How do you, you do?
Yeah.
Just redo them, or...
Well, redo them, and then we offer free delivery, so our delivery drivers are at houses very frequently, and generally, it's for that interaction as she spoke about.
That's a really good service.
That's very nice.
No, it's an excellent service, because it's really difficult for some people.
Knocking the door and hello is a big thing for someone who's not talking to anybody all day.
Absolutely.
Well, we have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Thomas DePietro in honor of achieving a designation as an individual providing great works in Lackawanna County, given the 21st day of February 2018 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Malley, and Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Would you like to come forward?
Thanks.
Tom has his family with him, too.
Yeah, would you like to bring your mom or your...
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, five seconds ago. Um, three, two, one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to have William Pastore come up to the podium. William's been involved with Lackawanna County Government for over 42 years. Jeez, I think, jeez, Andy, did you know him from back in the 70s, or...
We shared an office. I used to borrow money from him every payday. It was my bank.
He always paid me back, though.
Put that on the record.
But he was, he's the Chief Financial Officer for Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health, and William, let's talk a little bit. How's the 42 years been? You ready for retirement, and...
Oh, absolutely. I couldn't have taken another year of the Controller of Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities and running a tax practice. You know, for the last, you know, 35 years or so, I've been working 65, 75 hours a week for that 12-week period, and couldn't take it anymore. I'm looking forward to fishing and golfing.
So now you're going to cut down to a 10-hour day instead of a...
(laughing) I'm still putting in about 30.
Oh, 30, nice. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done and the service that you've provided, and I hope you have a great retirement, well, semi-retirement.
Right. Well, thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Great job, Bill, and have a happy retirement.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
But, Bill, we wanted to come, like I said, and recognize you, because Lackawanna County Government's a big family, and our thousands, some employees all matter, all of us. And you actually, I mean, you provided for your family, this is what you did every day for 42 years. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for, like, as you said, being involved with Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health. That's beyond the option of the financial part. You know, I mean, your heart has to be in it. You know, I mean, you see the cases, you understand the undertaking, and you know where exactly where all the money's going and how it provides for the community and our county. And like I said, it also goes into Susquehanna, but thank you for your time and your effort.
Well, you know, I was glad to serve, and like, one of my proudest accomplishments is that the only taxpayer money that ever went into our program was the minimum match requirement required by law. And like, I'm very proud of the fact that I did my part to, you know, contain property taxes.
Great job. Great job. And I think actually one of our retirees is in the background. Is that Steve there?
It sure is.
Steve.
And Bill hired Steve. Come on in, Steve. Bill hired him.
He's hiding.
Bill was Budget Director before Steve and recommended Steve for the position.
Wow. Yeah, that's, boy, my second greatest accomplishment was, you've done an outstanding job.
Well, Steve, and listen, he went out the door a year before you.
(laughing) Yeah, it's right out the door, Andy.
Billy, I'm not leaving.
So we have a certificate of recognition, the county...
We'll see.
Well, that's nice, isn't it? It's good to know you wanted, Andy, isn't it? Oh, yeah. We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize William S. Pastore as Chief Financial Officer for Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health in honor of your 42 years of dedicated service to Lackawanna County and 214,000 citizens, given the 21st day of February 2018 by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner O'Malley, and Commissioner Cummings. Would you like to come forward?
Donna is with him, too, Pat.
Hi, Donna, how are you?
Hi.
He's all yours now.
(laughing) Oh, I'm retired, too.
It sounds like he's kind of, he's going to be kind of busy anyway, still, but, you know.
True. Yes, a retired schoolteacher in the Scranton School District.
There you go.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
I just want one thing. Jeremy Yale, where's he at? Like, Jeremy, just kept saying, brief comments real quick for William. I got a little caught up in the fact of the 42 years.
I'm Steve Shaw. That was interesting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Talk to me about, well, go ahead.
Yeah, William, congratulations on your retirement. Billy actually asked me to keep my comments brief, Commissioner, because he's got to get out there and start working on that backswing. You know, don't let him fool you with the tax practice. It's fishing and golf.
Very minute compared to everything else.
Yep, yeah. I've had the opportunity to work with Bill for the last 11 years, and it's been a great time. It hasn't always been an easy time working through budget challenges and the fiscal ups and downs within the state. But Billy always did it with, with style. And, you know, on behalf of the Lackawanna Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program, congratulations, Bill.
Thanks, thanks for coming in. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation by President Judge Michael Berace, Court Administrator Frank Castellano, for the purchase of the building on Wyoming Avenue. Your Honor, thanks for being here today.
Good morning, and thank you. First of all, I want to comment, Commissioner, you mentioned the active shooter trainings that have been going on. Actually, it's going on today also. I want to thank Justin McGregor and the commissioners, as well as the Sheriff's Department, Judge Mazzone, for the committee that worked on this for the last couple of years. It is so necessary in regard to what we see going on today. Safety for our, not only for our employees, but also all the visitors that we have in the county buildings are subject to this type of possibility. You look at the work that's being done here on the second floor in regard to family court. You go over to the courthouse in regard to preliminary hearings and the courts in session and the adversarial type of situation it is. We are obviously a target for that, and I thank the sheriff's deputies that have really done tremendous work on this training. So again, thank the commissioners for what you have done to help this out.
Judge, what also I'd like to bring up is I actually was approached by the Superintendent of the School District, and I told her, I said, "Go right over and see the Sheriff's Department," because they heard about how great of a program it was, and it's very, very helpful and in-depth.
I was surprised, a number of employees that first complained about the fact that they had to go.
Yeah.
And now are thanking us for the fact that it's being, being placed on, so thank you again.
You know, Judge, what was nice about is the fact that as much as it was about our workplace, everything that was trained at it was something they could utilize at the mall, at the movie theater, in the street, wherever they are, so...
Thank you. Moving on to the purchase of the building, as everyone is aware, Central Court is located in the main courthouse. That has been a logistical problem, a safety problem, a security problem for a number of years. You have in one, in a room smaller than this, you have victims, whether it be domestic violence, whether it be rape, whether it be murder. You have victims and defendants' families there together. There are no ingress, egress is the same for everyone. We also have horrific logistical problems with the transport of prisoners from the Lackawanna County Prison due to the fact that they have to be coded differently, which means they are in different colors for safety purposes, and means that often the court system, if a preliminary hearing is scheduled, and there are a number of prisoners scheduled for that day, because of the fact that they are security rated differently, they have to be brought down separately. This has been a logistical nightmare for the operation of our courts. Many times, hundreds of prisoners are being sent back without a hearing being held. So not only is the prisoner getting his due rights in regard to have a hearing, but also means the victim has to come back again and again to testify. We have been working for a number of years to find a solution. Recently, we had visited a number of other counties to see what they have done. We were fortunate when we saw that the building behind the prison was open, and what this now allows us to do is not only to have a secure setting, but also savings and money for the county in two different ways. Number one, as you're aware, there's a processing center here in the county courthouse. There's a second processing center at the Lackawanna County Prison, which means that a prisoner is processed first down in the courthouse, which is a legal requirement. Some of those are free to go from there. Others are being brought out to the prison. When they go out to the prison, they are reprocessed again for the safety in regard to the prison itself. So obviously there, and I know Tom Durkin has done a financial study, that shows that that savings alone per year is over $400,000. The second part of this is that there's 4,000 prisoners being transported down annually to the Lackawanna County courthouse for matters that we could be doing out there at the other building, which means savings not only in regard to transportation, but also security, the fact that you're not taking the 4,000 prisoners from behind the prison walls and transporting down here and have the safety problems that we face every day. So I believe that this is a, also, the fact that the prison, if this building is not purchased by the county, will remain landlocked, so the chance of future expansion or any type of services being offered are, won't be able to happen. The other thing that the building will also provide is the ability for families to have conversations, for example, children to have visitations with the prisoners. There are a number of other collateral matters that really can help us with reentry programs, which I think are very important for the success of these individuals once they get out.
I see it as the, one of the first things I see is that the inmate never leaves the jurisdiction, the prison. That's what takes the safety, makes the safety so much better at that point. Keeps the corrections officer safe, keeps the sheriffs safe, and first and foremost, it keeps our citizens safe at all times.
And that really is our number one concern.
That's it. It's about the citizens, making sure everybody's safe.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, Judge, I agree that there's, there needs to be a solution to the problem, because I also see a problem with the work environment that our sheriffs are currently working under in that little hallway that you call what we consider to be a office space of sorts. It's disturbing that we even have people working in that environment.
Commissioner, on that, the second part, obviously, is once the processing is moved out, there, some of the space that you're talking about then can be made more acceptable for the work environment.
I would, yeah, that's what I would be looking for in, if there is a move, because that's my main concern right now, is their work environment.
Their work environment is that the people that work in Central Court, they're at danger all the time in regard to the way the present setup is, so...
I agree.
It's across the board and victims, obviously.
It's not, it's not just that, but they're also in an environment that's not conducive to their health, as far as I'm concerned. I am unsure why that was ever left that way in the, to begin with. I'm not sure what happened with the renovations at the prison, but in my opinion, that's a disaster, what they're working in, and they absolutely need a better working environment. And I'm sure that the equipment is continually having to be replaced because of the heat in that small space. I know they see, I see multiple fans running, but in that kind of space, I mean, how can you keep it cooled down for the equipment is, I'm not sure. It's just... It, it's just not acceptable and I understand why you're looking to help them and the other issues, but I'm always looking for savings in regards to the county so that we don't have to raise taxes and that we can actually hopefully one day, which I'm not seeing that, lower the taxes, that's what I was hoping for as becoming a Commissioner. I, I am concerned though because of the fact that we did have a, you know, a negative budget, so I'm concerned with the cost of the building and the renovations. I don't really have any estimates, do you have estimates on the cost at this point?
Commissioner, we had meetings with Tom Durkin several times and with Andy Walsh in regard to it, there was a number of different figures that were put out, but I can tell you that after sitting with Tom Durkin as recent as about two weeks ago, that he believed within a four or five-year period that this would be paid off because of the savings. And he actually went down and did a calculated, calculation in regard to what that meant in regard to number of employees and also transports and so he's, works here, he's the one that gave those numbers to us.
And we have the, we have the county engineer here and the county architect who did the estimates on the building, in event there's questions on that, they drew up the rough estimates and came up with the costs in addition to what we'd be paying for the building.
And I want to also thank the architectural firm for the work that they've done, they actually took a lot of time reviewing the present situation in Central Court, looked over the building, they walked us through it, sat down with us a number of times to make sure that all the concerns of not only the court, but the DA's Office of Public Defenders, the Sheriff's Department, and the prison, all were met, so I want to thank them for the work that they've done. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm still looking for the costs, what were the cost estimates for?
Bill Byrons here and Gary Cavill on the estimated cost of the renovations, Bill, would you like to address that?
Sure.
Gary, you want to come up too? Gary's the county engineer and Bill is representing Palumbo Architects, the architects. And Dave Johns is here too from GPI.
So we did a preliminary analysis of the building to verify that the, the program would fit in the building and it does, the program's roughly 8,000 square feet and the building size is 13,600 square feet.
Is there extra space?
There is some extra space, yes. The, the estimate ranges from 1.8 million to about 2.9 million depending on the scope that you want to include in the renovation. There was some discussion about taking the processing and booking out of the, out of this programming and keeping it into the prison. That would, that change rate there would reduce the estimate by about $400,000 and allow us to shift, shift courtroom and other ancillary functions of the courtroom in such a way that you'd use less of the building, which would reduce the renovation costs. So those are some preliminary numbers and there's a, a menu of options that you have in what you want to include in the renovations for the site and the building itself.
Did you include the IT costs, that would be included because they do have all of our, would our cameras and everything, all the monitors stay at the courthouse still? Are they required up at the other building as well, is that?
We need them in both locations.
So they're, they're not gonna stay in the room they're in though, right?
We did not get into that specific detail.
Okay, I'm asking the wrong person, okay.
But we did use conservative enough numbers to include the engineering systems.
We had them do a rough estimate, we didn't have them design the building, we wanted to make certain before we advocated for the purchase of the building, that it would actually meet the needs of what the court was looking for and they went through and they drew rough designs on it. That would all be done during final designs and the same with the estimates they gave, that's in addition, in addition to that would be the cost of the building too, besides the amount of money that they specified.
So the cost of the building is in that 1.8 mil, 2.9 mil?
It is not, it clearly is not in that amount, no. It's in a, the cost of the building would be $875,000, the cost of renovations, the range would be, what would you say Bill?
1.8 to 2.9.
1.8 to 2.9 million.
Am I correct, excuse me, it's, it's an 850,000, 850? 850?
No, it's 875, we gave a $10,000 deposit when we put the, when we put our option in on the building.
That includes that $10,000?
875, okay.
Okay, and the other concern I have is, well, you have the renovation costs.
And I should clarify that the, the estimate is preliminary and conservative and does have contingencies, both design and construction and escalation contingencies in it that would cover the more detailed concerns that you have, like the technology and IT costs.
So this is the high?
Oh yeah, yes, very conservative numbers and we're confident that it would.
So 4 million is what we're looking at? A $4 million loan? Is that what we're looking at?
In, in that range Commissioner, again, we don't have the exact numbers, the building is 875 and depending on what the renovations cost, anywhere from 1.5 to 3 million dollars, I guess, depending on what options we take when we do the final design and if we move some of the rooms. 4 million would be a safe figure.
Yes.
And you had asked me to question too, that where the money would come from and I explained to you, we would have to do a capital borrowing on that Commissioner. That'd be part of a capital budget that would be proposed.
Gary, the building's solid, right?
Building itself?
Yes. So no problem, what we're gonna have to do, you know what I mean, it's gonna?
Structurally, I mean mechanically wise, we're gonna have to retrofit the entire building.
Yes. But the actual physical outside of the building is in good shape, good roof, good walls, okay.
So then we didn't even look at what would happen with the current Central Court that we're utilizing now in regards to renovations because as I've already said, that cannot stay the way it is. Did we, did you look into that as well, because that would be included in this cost as well because we can't afford renovations to that building? And I, I mean, if I were gonna agree to this, I would have to have the current work environment changed for those employees because it's unacceptable the way it is right now.
Right, we did tour, tour that facility and our understanding was that the space that would be freed up by moving into this Wyoming Avenue building would then be renovated. I don't know how much real renovations you need other than rearranging, you know, furniture and layout.
But there's nowhere to renovate in that space, that's, that's as wide as the space we're sitting up here and possibly as long and it's enclosed.
Space in the main courthouse Commissioner?
No, I'm talking about Central Court downstairs where the cameras are.
Talking about the holding area where the cells are at.
Commissioner, we had talked that if the processing center is moved, behind that space that you're talking about is the present processing center, so that would open that entire space for.
So that, that's what I just asked them, they said, "No, that would remain."
No. No, that's part of the 8,000 square foot program that would be moving.
So then that would be gone, was my question, and he said, "No, the computers would still have to be in both places."
Computers still have to be in both places, but the work, actual work environment that you're looking at can be moved to that vacant room which is right behind where they were sitting.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not, that's where the whole space opens up to be answered.
Okay, but then there's still renovation costs there, so did you do costs on the renovations for that project, because that would have to be done as well?
No, we did not.
And that would have to be included in the borrowing, because we don't have any money to provide for that, we just don't.
Right, we did not do estimate, estimates for that, for this building.
And out of fairness then, we didn't ask them to do that Commissioner, we just asked them for an estimate on the building in the 1300 block of Wyoming.
I, I understand, but I've been talking about this and because they didn't do it isn't my problem, maybe they should have before they came, I mean, maybe we should have had them do that before they came in.
I, I understand.
And, and I'm not sure why that didn't happen, so I, I don't know if that was looked at as something that needed to be renovated or if they're just thought that they could just move equipment, but.
The original conversation that was held here was that the staff, the county staff would be making the renovations there that.
Yeah, our own maintenance staff would be able to, our big thing right now is we have to evaluate that area in general and the truth of the matter is you'd have probably left sheriff's deputies down in that area because they're never gonna have, if this was to go through, they're not gonna have the population of inmates that they would have down there like they have right now at this moment. They would never have the congestions of the colors of people that might be sex offenders, drug dealers, violent offenders, females, you know what I mean? So that's gonna, that's gonna offset a lot of the issues. Even the warmth, you know, but even it's, it's not gonna be such a tight environment because there's gonna be a lot, there's a lot less use and that building is, I think to the right of it, that actual room, so that's something that our maintenance staff could evaluate.
Commissioner, I'm not sure you're understanding what I'm referring to. When I went over and did a tour, the area where the cameras are behind the glass windows is as wide and small as the space that we're sitting in and enclosed, there is no way to expand it unless you knock that glass enclosure wall down and open that space up. And behind them is a rock wall and I believe that that work environment for our sheriffs is unacceptable and the environment is not a healthy one for them to work in regardless of whether there's prisoners or colors are changing that congestion, it's not gonna affect that specific area because they don't go, the only people that are in that area are the sheriffs that are monitoring the cameras and the equipment and they have fans hanging from the ceiling to try and cool it off and underneath to try and cool off the equipment and it's, it's a deplorable, it's deplorable. I, I just want to make sure that if we're going to make this move, that they wouldn't have to work in that type of an environment anymore because that would be my whole, one of my whole reasons for doing that was because of their safety and their environmental conditions that they're currently having to work in. So, I mean, that hasn't been answered for me, I mean, I understand the savings has been answered, but you know, this is why I had asked, can we table this for, you know, for the sole purpose of actually having a session talking about the issues that all of us are concerned about? That, that's what I would be looking for because I think there's a lot of unanswered questions still and with the Globe, we had many, many years of meetings before we purchased that building and before you even decided on a building. I understand this, this looks like to be the best building to purchase at this point. I appreciate the fact that Judge Berace has done so much work on trying to accommodate the needs of everyone involved, but I still have many questions in regards to the environment that our current employees are working in. Still, in regards to the savings, I don't know what those renovation costs would be to provide that environment and if we were to move, I would expect that that environment be fixed for them because I saw this two years ago and I was appalled by the, the work environment that they're currently in. I, I just don't understand how they can even sit in that space and breathe. It's just a basement area that's a closet that was made into a camera viewing area and it's just not acceptable and I agree with Judge Berace that we have to do something just for that purpose alone, I would be in agreement. The other issues I agree with are that, I'm sure that there's a lot of congestion over at the current prison because of the fact that the sheriffs have to wait in line behind delivery trucks and are probably tying up traffic on Wyoming Avenue for all those poor residents over there that have to live with that. There's multiple problems that your suggestion would solve, but I still need some figures in regards to costs for the renovations in the current area that they're in and that wasn't provided and we didn't have anyone look at that, so I would ask that we can at least get that done prior to voting on this today. And I, I don't see the rush in this, if we can at least hold it off for two weeks. In addition to that, we have, I have been looking into privatizing the prison and people have been calling interested in that and we have a tour of one of the companies tomorrow. So they're going to be providing us with information in regards to privatization and/or management within the next week or so and I think that I would want to hear their information on that and at least include them in knowing what our thoughts are in regards to the renovations here because if they can't privatize, they can also look at purchasing the building and that would be of tremendous help to this county and the taxpayers. So I would just ask that if we can at least table, what's that?
Address the zoning issue you asked me about.
Well, that, that is a major problem and in our, in our lease agreement, we don't even know if we're zoned, if we can get zoned for this. So apparently we have to purchase the building first and then go to Scranton, no?
It's contingent, right, upon that, contingent upon zoning, right? No, I'm sorry, solicitor's opinion, all three?
We won't actually purchase the building until we get zoning, a final non-appealable zoning decision. So we don't buy it and then go, we go through the process of zoning, see if we're approved, let the appeal period run and once we have a final decision on the zoning and if it's favorable, then we will move forward and purchase the building.
So then what is our vote for today?
Enter the agreement.
To go forward.
The agreement that's attached to our paperwork today?
There's a real estate agreement, we would give an additional deposit too on it, in the agreement.
Well, the agreement of sale, when I read through it, do you have it in front of you on maintenance risk and risk of loss?
John, she wants John to look at it. John.
You have a five-day settlement on that and then? Section B at the end, the buyer fails to respond by or accept the property and agree to the release in, as paragraph 28 of this agreement, so I go over to 28? I mean, are these all?
They're pretty much standard.
This is just a standard, which gives you five days to say no, correct? To change your mind?
Yeah, inspections, yeah, but paragraph in the last page, 32, the special clauses where the road.
I see that.
Yeah, that, that's the operator. And you have to sign an agreement of sale with outstanding, otherwise you can't apply for.
I agree.
Yeah, that, that's the issue, and this is done frequently, this is not unusual one, it's something.
So then we're buying, so we're agreeing to purchase the building?
Only, only if you get the proper approval. Yeah, if that's denied, then the deal is canceled, the money's refunded.
What money is refunded?
Down payment.
I thought we were gonna lose that $10,000 either way, no?
No, we made sure that we weren't going to.
And if we pass the other resolution today, we would give them an additional $25,000.
We would.
We'll explain that when we get to that part of the agenda, but that's.
As part of a negotiation, the seller might want to make sure that people that are purchasing are more serious, so sometimes they ask for more money to, you know, at a different state, that's not an unusual thing, that's what happens. They want to have more money upfront in the event there would be a default, not a lack of zoning approval, but a default, that they would be able to go after, that's, that's the reason.
So.
Not an unusual situation.
So then you can guarantee because of the way this lease is written, that if the zoning is not approved for us to even proceed with this project, that we would not be obligated to purchase the building and we would not lose our down payment that we gave them? Could, can you guys say that on, on the microphone because?
Correct Commissioner, that the agreement is contingent upon zoning approval, that the building can be used for our intended use. If we do not obtain proper zoning approval, then the agreement is null and void and all deposit monies will be returned to the county.
The competing interest.
John, you need a microphone soon.
The seller has to take this property off the market, so he may want more money just to make sure that it's gonna be sold because he is, he would be taking it off the market once he signs the agreement and that's, it's not unusual for someone to put a thousand dollars down and then three, four weeks later, put another five down as the matter progresses.
And it gets, and it gets taken off the top of the actual mortgage.
Both sides want to make sure the other party is serious and are gonna, gonna go through a binding agreement, that's basically what it is.
Understand.
Realtor negotiates most of this, I, you know, with, after talking to principals from the county.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate the answers and I hope that that's, I mean, it's on the record, so I can't. Okay, but I still, as I said, would, because of two issues, one renovations to the current area and two, because of my stance on. area and two, because of my stance on hopefully looking at privatizing the prison, until I get their information and how this might affect their decisions, I would like to ask the commissioners if they can at least wait for that two-week period before we made a decision on that.
Commissioner, we, we've worked on this for years and we have had meetings for years in regard to it. The Volksden start now putting into the mix the privatization, that's not going to be resolved in two weeks. That, that may take years to resolve.
It's not just that, though.
Hand down the road and putting the sheriffs they had talked about at greater jeopardy every single day. If we have a chance of buying this now, I don't know how much longer the seller is going to work with us either. We've had the terms of agreement, I believe, since last fall. Since when?
Almost a year.
Almost a year. I mean, this is, and we've, we've had countless meetings now with only the architects, with the prison, with you, with the staff, just like you said about the Globe, we put that same amount of time into this project.
I, I understand the, the meetings that we've had, but I have yet to receive any written information with savings on it. I have yet to receive that. Did anybody here receive a written statement of the savings that we're going to get from the sale of this, or the purchase of this building?
Commissioner Notary, any?
Just by the, the concept and the location of the building and what's going to develop after it's purchased and changed, it, it, obviously there's going to be savings involved because of the transportation and because of the lesser employees. And as far as the renovations to the basement where these situations are that you're not happy with, once those people are moved, that will open up that area. And it can be resolved and it can be used for something differently. That was used many years ago as the maintenance rooms.
Closet?
It's, it's totally different now and when these people move out, we'll be able to use it for something differently. If I'm not mistaken, we are on a stay of a contempt order.
Correct.
Correct. A contempt order that we're responsible to fix the safety problem involved. There's a contempt order against the county commissioners.
Who, who wrote that?
Pardon me?
Who wrote that?
I think Judge Brace.
Well, of course, you're the one that wants to do this. So I mean, that really doesn't mean much to me, I'm sorry to say.
No, Commissioner, this is long before that building was for sale, he did that because of the safety issues with the.
That goes back to the other commissioners, the last term, the problem was first addressed, had nothing to do with the building. We then looked for alternatives. There were several different alternatives that the prior commissioners had offered to us. So this, when it came up, was a resolution of problems that we've had for a number of years, Commissioner. It's not something that just evolved.
Oh, I see, that, it's been a number of years. Yeah, I agree with that.
For the viewing audience, I want to know that the reason why we're doing this is not because of a maybe contempt charge, which was administrations ago. This is about the fact that the jail is landlocked. This is the only option we have for it to be unlocked from being landlocked.
Then you shouldn't have brought it up, I mean.
It just, it really, it actually has been talked about for two years and actually four years ago, I think it was on the market, it was even talked about a little bit back then. But now we're at a juncture and I think at this point, and I believe in what you want to do with the table and stuff, but no matter what, at the end of the day, we're going to have, we need to buy this building. We really need to, so.
You know, I, I understand that, and as I said, I, I have no issues with the reasoning behind all this. I am looking at the costs. And it was done in a previous administration and they didn't do it for a reason either. It wasn't because they didn't want our employees to be safe. We have, what are we, 1.5, Tom, million short in our, this year's budget and next year probably going to be another 10 million we're going to have to cut off. I mean, do anybody, does anybody actually look at numbers anymore? I just don't understand why. I, I don't, I'm asking for a simple request. Give me some costs and there is nothing written. And I agree, Commissioner Notary, any?
I have from Tom Durkin, just in regard to the processing center, a report that shows $402,000 per year savings, just in that.
Can I have a copy of that?
Your controller against the board.
Well, that's a first for me that I'm seeing that because nobody would write it down. Can I, can I see it?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And that's actually barring a lot of other savings that are out there in general.
That does leave a lot of transport.
Yeah.
So these came from the sheriff's office?
No, came from your, Tom Durkin.
Commissioner, Chief Staff Wallace, myself, Kevin Mitchell, met with Judge Brace and Frank Castellano, I think it was about two weeks ago.
Can you come up to the mic?
And I was asked to try to determine if we could find money in this project that would amortize the debt service if we were to purchase the building and borrow money for it. As the judge says, we anticipate that there'll be significant savings from a dollars and cents point of view because the sheriffs aren't going to be transporting all the prisoners back and forth. And I didn't go from that angle. I took what to me was more certain, the processing center that will now move to the prison won't need to be staffed any longer.
Thank you.
And that's the sheet that I put together to show what the current costs of the processing center are and what the anticipated cost will be when we move the processing center to the prison. And as the judge says, the bottom line is that we're going to save approximately $400,000 annually, which I told the judge and the chief of staff at the time that, in my opinion, that would be plenty of money to amortize up to $4 million of debt if we were to borrow.
Okay. Well, that, that is an answer, thank you. I appreciate that because that's, now, is that, we don't know, though, what the cost would be on that loan for, because we don't have one, obviously, but you can estimate.
We have, no, we haven't asked anybody to, to give us an estimated cost, but, but again, I would expect that we would amortize the loan over 20 or 25 years and $400,000 a year would be more than enough to amortize a $4 million loan if we were to borrow. And, and my understanding is that the maximum would be 4 million, it will probably be less than that, but the 4 million, or the $400,000 annually would be more than enough to amortize that debt service over 20 years.
Tom?
We were contemplating doing a capital borrowing, looking at a lot of the needs of the county that haven't been addressed and that would just be one part of it. That's the reason we didn't just go out and get a separate rate on that one.
I understand, that's why I'm asking all these questions.
I understand, they're good questions.
Also, the renovations for the current area that they have where the cameras are going to have to remain and be viewed absolutely can't stay that way. So that has to be fixed as well. So we don't know what those costs are going to be.
That wasn't part of my calculation.
I know, I understand that.
Right.
And, and I would assume something of that nature would probably, I mean, those walls have to be, either they have to just move the cameras, which would be an IT cost, right, into a different room, which is what you're looking at, Judge?
Yes, it would be, yes.
No, it needs to be. They can't work in that.
The room right behind there.
Okay, I didn't see that room. We'll have to go over and look at it. But that area has to be, they can't work like that, they can't.
Understood, Commissioner.
Yeah. All right, all I could do is ask, thank you. I think, let me just make sure all my questions are asked. Got the work environment.
Commissioner Notary, any questions?
Oh, I've been supportive of this program since the beginning and I'd like to make a motion to go forward.
Well, we got to get to that point.
You have to get to it.
We're not there yet.
We have to public comment first and then second item under resolution.
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Roads, Scranton. I'm here today because I couldn't get beyond the "I agree" page of the assessor's pay, website. And first of all, are resolutions one and done? When you vote for that, that's final? There's no first reading and?
Apparently not.
One and done.
Okay. Can you tell me what the assessment is on the property and what the ratio would be?
Property on Wyoming Avenue?
Yes, please.
We have that, yes.
Total assessment is $160,000.
$160,000.
And the fair market value is determined by our assessor based upon the step will be $1,067,200.
I have some issues with that, but the other thing, the other thing I would like to know is the payback time with the renovations, as a taxpayer. And what about the operating costs? It seems as though the operating costs are going to increase if you're going to heat and cool a building that's only being used 8,000 square feet of 13,000 square foot building. Are there plans for the other five? Do we have duplicates of equipment and personnel? Those are all questions that I would like to hear before you vote on it. So I'm in agreement with Commissioner Cummings that two weeks wouldn't kill this. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Anyone else? Okay, Resolutions 18-0047, approving current payables.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, dis hereby approve the following payables from the Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 257977 through 258586 inclusive, totaling $2,019,871.57. Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling $2,483,506.30.
I'd like to make a motion to approve current payables. Do I have a second?
I, I, I'll give a second, but on the question?
On the question?
I understand, Mr. DeBilio, that there are currently no invoices and payments in this for the lawyers that have been so tremendously questioned in the news today. Is that correct?
That's right, Commissioner. There are no legal bills regarding the prison activity in this group of payments.
Okay.
I understood a couple commissioners had questions, so we did not pay bills that we currently have at, at the controller's office.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, with all the misinformation and sensationalism currently being reported, I would like to ask Solicitor Brazil to answer a few questions, not for my benefit, but for the public's benefit. And in regards to the legal fees that have been questioned in the, in the newspaper and can you give a recap of how this began and where we are today, starting with the fact that we were actually the ones that handed this case to the AG due to a conflict of interest in the DA's office? Isn't that correct?
Assistant Attorney, then, what's the AG?
Correct. And if I can, just, just give a brief summary and I certainly try to be brief on it. Originally, this matter arose relative to a lawsuit. Immediately upon that lawsuit, the county commissioners referred this matter to the DA to investigate for potential criminal charges. The DA perceived a conflict and then referred that matter to the Attorney General's office. Pursuant to that referral, the Attorney General's office earlier on this year served a search warrant. I would indicate to you that that search warrant encompassed all emails of Lackawanna County. That includes all branches of Lackawanna County. The initial search warrant encompassed over 13 million items. That raised immediate concerns, not relative to the investigation, but releasing confidential and protected information. We have information from children and youth services, juvenile, the judicial branch of our government and, and the judges. And a lot of, a lot of that information is potentially, certainly confidential and certainly subject to privilege. I mean, I think now that there was 40,000, a rough estimate of conversations between attorneys and things of that nature. And this raised a real concern because you, as a commissioner, have an obligation to protect that information. And at that point, I felt it necessary to employ a firm that had experience to deal with this very serious issue because if we just allowed information not related to the investigation, but that was both privileged and confidential to be disseminated, that could open the county to potential lawsuits. And Myers-Breyer and Kelly is an experienced firm. I employed them to act as a coordinator of this grand jury and to review the records and, and look at any potential liability. And as a result of that, they filed various motions and I think they've handled it in an extremely competent manner. Just one point, and I noted that for one person to go through 13.5 million items and you have to go through them all to determine if they're protected, one person working 24 hours a day would take 125 years.
So that's what these lawyers are actually doing is going through the emails and?
And, and through their efforts, they called the list of items down to 27,000 as opposed to over 13 million. And they have literally gone through 40% of them and they turned over that 40% to the Attorney General's office. And just understand, this is where we're, we're working, we're cooperating as much, but we do still have these other duties to protect records that are unrelated to this investigation. And that is a serious duty and obligation of the commissioners.
Thank you for recapping that and confirming, clarifying that issue because it's being reported or actually maybe it's being insinuated, I'm not sure because I don't really read the articles in the Scranton Times, they have them sent to me, that we're actually filing a lawsuit against the AG. These are the questions I'm getting out in the public and I just want to, I want to clarify these so that I can make sure that the public actually understands what's happening here. So is there some kind of lawsuit or something that we're doing against the AG in question that's doing this investigation, John?
The, the only thing that is pending, Commissioner, is the, and I can't, I really don't want to discuss grand jury.
Correct, I understand that.
It's more outside of that. Myers-Breyer and Kelly had filed a motion to quash the search warrant issued and they filed it in local court and that's presently in front of Braxton. And for a number of reasons, I think, some of it had to do with the breadth of it and also because they felt there was a legal issue, whether that was the course of action to take. But keep in mind, while this is pending, they're working hand in hand with the Attorney General to go through all of these items and give them the items they are looking for. It was literally after they got involved that the Attorney General, they worked together to get search terms of all these records. And they're going through those now as we speak and they expect within two weeks to have all of those records disseminated to the Attorney General's office. We are working with them and cooperating, but they felt that there was a legal obligation to look at these and, and to, to move forward if, and they filed that action with Judge Braxton and we're just waiting for an opinion on, a decision on it.
So this is basically just people hired to go through all the emails that were requested and they had to go through them and possibly redact information or privilege information and question those being sent in regards to the specific filing.
You have a lot of information there. First of all, judiciary has privilege.
Right.
So there's a lot of emails from the judiciary. There is communications between attorneys and clients, okay? They have to go through theirs. There's confidential information, for instance, potentially medical records, potentially juvenile records, there could be potential other grand jury emails, okay? These are all items that need to be reviewed. And understand the process, that this firm will then list the items that it thinks is confidential and give a reason why. And that will be submitted to the Attorney General and they would have the right to challenge it, but they're, they will give them that information to make a determination. And just so you understand, even though this action with Judge Braxton is filing, they're working together to provide this information as we speak. As I indicated just last week, they supplied 40% of those 27,000 emails that they were going through.
So the AG also agrees with the information that we, they agree that they don't need that in regards to the investigation? Is that correct or no?
Well, I, I don't know what the Attorney General agrees. I mean, I really didn't have any discussions. My discussions with our firm indicated that they, they developed a protocol which is search terms to search all of these emails. And as a result of that search, they came up with a certain number of records and now they are going through those records. And keep in mind, as this thing progresses, the Attorney General may ask for additional records.
Mm-hmm.
And they are entitled to them, and they will be reviewed also for privilege and confidential.
It's just that we had to review all the information before, because of the privilege with the courts and children and youth, we had to...
As any...
A lawyer would have to do that.
As any company would have to do, as any corporation would have to do, we have the same obligation.
Thank you for clarifying.
Shouldn't the commissioners have been made aware prior to you hiring...
I was getting to that.
...these law firms to do that? We were totally unaware that that was the case and why it was happening. We weren't told, I knew nothing of it, Commissioner Cummings knew nothing of it. We read it in the paper, the newspaper did misstate saying that the commissioners hired. That isn't true. We did not hire them. You did, and without my knowledge, without Commissioner Cummings' knowledge.
Or Commissioner O'Malley's.
Right. As I've indicated into the works, at the work session, and I talked to you about this, first of all, this was a grand jury investigation, and I felt it was incumbent, as you being the commissioners, that you have very little involvement with this at all. I did consult with John Serra, and I consulted with the attorney for the prison board, advised him the course of action, I think, that would best protect the county, and they agreed with that course of action. I mean, I think under this situation, I mean, normally if you have a lawsuit, you're advising the commissioners of what's going on. And I think just because of a grand jury, that could be inappropriate. You at any time could meet with Pat Casey or lawyers from that law firm, and I think they'd have no problem discussing it with you. But you're right, I did not talk to you under the code. I employed these people because I felt it was that serious of a situation.
Yeah, and it's just part of the process in providing the information that was requested from the AG's office. It's not another lawsuit or litigation.
It's part of the process.
It's just part of the initial investigation that's being held by the AG. So there is no other litigation by this county against the Attorney General's Office.
As a general counsel for litigation, we have not filed any lawsuit against the Attorney General's Office, I can certify that. There's a challenge out there, there's a subpoena, but that's it, there's no litigation, no lawsuits.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the people understand that, because...
I still feel that we should have been informed that this was going to occur, and that was the reason for it, an explanation as to why you were telling us. You said to me, I can talk to Pat Casey of that law firm. The other, the same meeting, John Serra said he didn't think I should talk to him. Yeah, the exact opposite of what you're saying. This is, you know, again, if we were giving, again, you read in the paper, the commissioners hired, the commissioners didn't hire them.
And I did not report that to them.
I'm well aware of that, but I'm just stating it. That's a perception, that we hired them, and we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money, and I think we should have been made aware of what was going on and what the potential costs are. I mean, it's a concern to us, too. We're the ones that are responsible.
And I agree with you, Commissioner. I mean, I was abundantly cautious in the whole matter, and it was more to insulate the commissioners. If you want updates, I will provide that to you.
As long as it's not something that's, you know, that shouldn't be done because of a grand jury.
Right.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was the appropriate action by our solicitors after reviewing it with them. I think it was, you know, I'm not a lawyer, and I think I've said this numerous times before, I'm not a lawyer, so whatever you guys all decide is the appropriate action in regards to any lawsuit or investigation, that's what we hire you to do. So now I understand. But I think what happened here is that yet again, it's assumed by the media that we somehow, when they decide to put the commissioners in the paper or the majority commissioners, the public reads that as though we spoke to the paper in regards to this issue, when in fact, they never called us, we didn't know anything about what they were reporting. And frankly, I think it was a little bit over the top, and now we're hearing, there is absolutely, just so the public knows, there is absolutely no lawsuit or litigation against the Attorney General's Office. I don't know where that came from. And it's amazing that I had received so many calls and emails regarding this because of something that was in the newspaper. I'm not sure how that came about, but just so the public knows, when you read something in the paper that says, "The majority commissioners, the county commissioners," and then there's no comments after that by any of us, you could probably 99% guarantee that they haven't spoken to any of us, because I don't know about you, Commissioner Notariani, well, I do know about you, Commissioner Notariani, because you didn't speak to them.
I brought it up to you.
You asked me about it because I don't read the paper, and you brought it to me to show me. Commissioner O'Malley, I asked you later, they never called you, did they? No. So not one of us was questioned about the articles that ran in regards to whatever article they were reporting on, and I'm not sure where they got their information from, but maybe the public should ask them, because, you know, I would like to know, where did they get that information? Who did they call? Why did they call? You know, if we didn't even know about this, how did the Scranton Times know about this? Is there some kind of, you know, inappropriate actions being taken behind the scenes that we're not even aware of? We can't even find out about investigations going on with the AG's office due to inappropriate, you know, information being possibly relayed or jeopardizing us or any of us. But yet somehow, information gets to the Scranton Times newspaper, which actually, I didn't read the whole article, I was called on it, but after the fact, after apparently three articles from what the reporter told me were written, which I didn't know, that there was apparently one last year as well in the fall. And I was, I was...
When bills start coming, and people are going to become aware, it's a public record. That's how that, that's how it begins.
Well, it's just interesting to note that they knew about information that none of us up here even were questioned about or knew about. And just so the public knows, we weren't asked any questions on that. Now you're getting your answers, and maybe in the future, feel free to call any of us, because we have no problem answering questions about what's actually happening in this county. So I'm not sure what, maybe that's what the Attorney General was referring to when he called us, what did he, what did he call us? You know, I had, people drop these off my house. What did he call us? I have to, I have to read this, because it's just amazing to me. Where you have this kind of pervasive culture, you have to wonder how far up the chain this goes. Based on what? What we're supposed to be, what our attorneys are doing to help the investigation process? And to sit through hours and hours of emails reading that were requested to protect the courts and the children that were brought before the courts? Let me break, what a joke.
Commissioner, just for the record, so you understand this completely, we had a right-to-know request from the Scranton Times regarding the legal bills for the law firm that was hired.
To do what?
They wanted the amounts of the money that was paid to the law firm and why they were hired. I sent a statement along with a copy...
Can I just stop you for one second? Because right then and there, none of us knew there was any attorneys hired.
Well, but they were...
So how did the Scranton Times know to even put that request in?
They were passed on warrants in a county commissioners' meeting. They were passed and voted on, the bills to this law firm, and they had copies of the amounts of money, and they, we authorized them and sent them to them. I gave them a...
But how did they know to question that, Andy?
I don't know that. I don't know that, but I did send them, I did send them a statement saying they were authorized county expenses. I didn't say the county commissioners, I said the county authorized, because the county did authorize this through our attorney, through our solicitor. He had discussed it with me, and they were authorized expenses of the county, they were signed off, and they were submitted to the Controller's Office, and they were paid, and they were voted on at a public meeting. They wanted copies of the bills and copies of the contracts, and they asked them for us under a right-to-know, and we provided them to them, and I gave them a very brief statement saying they were authorized by Lackawanna County. I did not say the county commissioners authorized this, or did not name any county commissioners, but I did say they were authorized, and they were authorized expenses of Lackawanna County, voted on at a public meeting.
Well, they were authorized by, the attorneys have to sign off on them, correct? Because that's your job.
That is correct.
So then, they authorized them, and then they come to us to vote on the payables.
We voted on them in the warrants, we voted on them.
But it's something that, when we're looking at legal bills coming in and paid, it's something that is required, and we knew that there was actions being taken on this investigation, so of course, we're not going to question, you know, what the payments are, and that's, you know, it's fine. I mean, that's part of their job. But how it got exploded into this major upset is beyond me, because, you know, maybe, maybe the, and this is what I told the reporters, she would be best to call the commissioners and specifically ask them those questions before assuming they know the answers and printing them, and putting the county commissioners in there when it's, in fact, they never spoke to us.
Just a second, Commissioner. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our chief solicitor. You know, this is about protecting the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County. This is about making sure that their rights aren't violated, and that's what our solicitors did. I'd like to thank the three that are here, I'd like to thank Mr. Sofinelli, and the truth is, we didn't need to know who was going to be, because we didn't need to be involved with anything that has to do with the grand jury.
Sorry.
And first and foremost, we asked the district attorney to come in and investigate this. So we were making sure that we were absolutely and utterly transparent. But again, I'd like to thank our solicitors for the fine job they've done in making sure that the 214,000 citizens' history, their lives, their health issues, their, whatever we may have in the courts, are protected. That's our job. And I believe that if our solicitors believe that whoever the best person is to do that, they have to make that decision and make it be, and they did. And I think that, I'd like to congratulate you for the great job that you've done. Thank you, and that includes Solicitor Sofinelli.
I agree, because that could have been done in-house, and we would have been paying our own solicitors.
It was insurmountable.
We've heard what happens with that, don't we?
It was insurmountable. And you know what? We're always trying to save money here. I totally agree. I voted the last two budgets. I understand what it's like to vote a budget, and I understand what it's like to work on a budget. We're always trying to save money. Like even with this project we're talking about right now, we're trying to save money on behalf of the citizens every single day, absolutely every day. Okay.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, now listen, now, we've got to get to this. Roll call.
Yay, we got the payables done.
It was roll call.
Warrants on the payables.
We did the motion and the second, so, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Tracy, Tracy, reach out to the prison board and let them know.
Appreciate all that, thank you.
Okay, 18-0048, entering into a real estate sale agreement.
Entering into a real estate agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter into an agreement for the sale of real estate with Rika Property Holdings, LLC, for the purchase of a property at 1360 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the purchase price of $875,000.
I'd like to make a motion entering into a real estate sale agreement. Do I have a second, and then we'll do on the question?
Second.
Okay, on the question.
On the question, I agree with the premise of why we have to do this. I appreciate the work that Judge Brice and everyone involved has done. I still have questions in regards to expenditures, and as I've said in the past, I'm looking at, you know, every single day we hear about the prison, we see Attorney Generals complaining about how it's been run over the past however many years, we see the people, the public being subject to a constant barrage of problems there. And I've just, I'm with them, I've had enough of it. It's time, it's time to do something different with that prison, and I think it's time to privatize that prison and hand it over to people that actually have the experience running facilities like this throughout our country, and the expertise in management and budgeting for better rates in all the different services that are required throughout the prison. They have, you know, multiple contracts and much better ways to save money for this county. And what better time to do it than now, for crying out loud, anyway? Thank you.
Commissioner Notariani?
Nope.
There was a lot of, there's a lot of work that's been going in. This actually has been going on somewhat, even if it was in the far off, even before this Board of Commissioners even got here. And, I mean, we're at the turning point where, like I said, it's either land lock or unlock, and I believe it's got to be unlock. We got a lot of stuff that we have to do, and I believe that this center will be able to provide a lot of options. And I do agree with Commissioner Cummings on a lot of her thoughts and her ideas on what's going on across the street, and that's something that we'll definitely look into. But this building, we can't let it get away from us at this point, so.
Chairman, just to make a note that, and I thank the Controller's Office, but before purchasing or voting a purchase of any property, we need to determine that it's for the fair market value, and there's a number of ways to do that. And part of this, we do have correspondence from our assessors indicating the assessed value of the property and the fair market value based upon an assessment, and he believes the purchase price is actually the fair market value. And in addition to that, we have an appraisal that was done by Peter Canton, and he is a real estate appraiser, and he indicates the value of the property, it'd be $1.2 million. So just so it's on the record that the determination has been made as to the fair market value of the property, and that the price we're purchasing is in fact the fair market value. I just wanted that on the record.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Notariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'm staying.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. I'd like to congratulate everyone that's been involved in this process. Judge, I know that you've been working very hard at this with Frank and everyone else in our administration. Thank you for coming over today, lots to do in the future. Okay? Thank you. 18-0039.
Awarding arts and culture grants. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby award the arts and culture mini-grants to the following community organizations.
You should stick around.
Dixon City Borough, $500 for Dixon City Days. Borough of Mayfield, $500 for the annual concert in the park. Elmhurst Township, the Roaring Brook Township. $1,000 for the band Old Friends to perform at the Fireman's Picnic. Borough Volifan, $500 for the summer musical entertainment as host company number one and host company number two. And Maureen McGuigan, our Director of Arts and Culture, is here to answer any questions on these grant agreements.
Good morning, Maureen.
Honored Commissioners, this is just our annual grant program that goes out every year. We send a letter in January to communities. It's a way to get some money spread throughout the county for arts and culture community events. So these are all valid, and we're recommending they be funded.
Does the Board have any questions for Ms. McGuigan? I'd like to make a motion awarding arts and culture grants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. 18-0040.
This is for an aging agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby enter into an amendment under the Aging Block Grant on behalf of the Pennsylvania Department of Erie Agency on Aging with the Melting Pot Intercultural Senior Citizen Center and our Director of Aging Services, Director Jason Kevulich, is here to explain the agreement and answer any questions.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. This is an agreement to provide additional funding to the Melting Pot Multicultural Center. This is our newest senior activity center in the county, and when we anticipated funding for this year, we were a little bit short as to how many people would actually be in attendance. They've had a much larger attendance rate than we had anticipated, and fortunately, we have additional funding to provide to them for meals for older adults, as well as activities for older adults for the remainder of the year.
Good. Does the Board have any questions for Jason? I'd like to make a motion entering into an aging agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Jason. 18-0041.
Approving a redevelopment assistance capital grant, application for urban smart growth Scranton Commons. This is authorized in the file of a redevelopment assistance grant with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of this group for eligible cost under the program they're applying for, and Mr. Kelly is here to explain the process on the RCAP grant agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, George. Nice tie.
Thank you very much. Nice and green, getting ready for...
Getting ready, right? Right on the corner.
And today is before you, we're doing applications for redevelopment assistance program funding. Periodically, the Governor will open up a round of funding where we could put in applications to support economic development projects, community improvement projects. We have a number of them before you today. We're going... projects. We have a number of them before you today. We're, we're going to be the applicant of record. All recipients of the grants need some type of municipal body, a government body, to submit these grants for us to administer and to make sure that they adhere to the rules of the Commonwealth and to the state. So this would be the first of the four today. This is for the former state school for the deaf. There's a multi-generational mixed-use project that is currently under contract with Marywood University by Urban Smart Growth. They're looking at putting up to 68 apartments in, in nine different buildings, a restaurant, a wellness center. And the good news about this is this will be back on the tax rolls, this property, once it is developed.
Now, how many acres is this property?
It's a little under eight acres in total. There's nine buildings. There's also two pads for development.
And I want people to realize what this is. This is the old Scranton School for the Deaf, and I don't think it's, it's around 100 some years. I'm not even sure when the last time was actually on the tax roll. So this is gonna go back on the tax roll.
Definitely will.
Immediately.
Well, there's a question on that, because I, I can't find the information that Marywood had put in there. I mean, they, they give us a short synopsis of what they're doing. I can't find any Columbus, Ohio, and Pawtucket, Rhode Island projects that they've done to compare it to what the work they're doing.
Under Urban Smart Growth, there's a website where they detail, they've done over 3 million square feet that they own that they rehabbed. They've taken some old industrial buildings and really bad places in towns and converted those. And they've had challenges with those, those properties because of the nature of the neighborhoods. No one would even want to walk into the neighborhood. But they've done some really good projects. Rhode Island is an example. And you'll see that they have done a lot in terms of creating a restaurant to actually help people get employment skills, so they'll work with different community groups, veterans, for example, to bring them in so that they can have a place to live as well as work. They do a lot with artists. They do a lot of artist's lofts because they'll, artists.
They took a lot of, like, properties that were probably, like, one I saw was in a real rough section of the town and actually kinda regrew the community around it. Am I right?
Here in our area?
What's that?
In our area?
No, no, this is outside of our area. This guy, this developer's from California. He picked up on this.
Oh, boy. California, here they come.
He's, he's from Berkeley. He's, you'll love to meet him. Good job, George.
Come on. And you want me to, no wonder, yeah, smart growth, okay. Now I know what it is.
And, and this is a little higher-end project in terms of the properties that they typically do buy, because they usually buy the brownfields, the distressed properties that need total rehabbing. This one does need a total rehab.
And they're keeping all the historical buildings in place because those buildings are 100 years old.
Yes, they are.
And they're in good shape.
There'll be some future growth. And, and they've been working very close with the communities because there's issues of, of parking, of access, of using the road. So they've been very attuned to working with the community groups, meeting with the neighborhood groups already, and doing a good job of partnering with Marywood to do multi-generational living. There's gonna be a bed and breakfast in one of the headmaster's quarters, which will also be an attractant for Marywood for people to stay right to the left of their campus.
And what you have to realize is, uh, you know, we, we talk about the tax base and stuff. This is eight acres in Scranton that's being bought.
Scranton and Dunmore both.
And Dunmore, part of Dunmore.
The school is in Scranton, and the other buildings are in Dunmore, so it's in the county, back on the tax rolls. Now, Scranton does have a three-year alert right now for any improvements. So the, the base taxes will come to us, but for three years, most likely, they'll get an abatement of any improvements or anything that's raised as a result of what they're doing for the rehab. But there will be taxes immediately out of the gate in three years. We'll see the balance of it.
But they're not gonna be able to recoup any funds for at least two to three years, probably just on the construction project alone?
Two to three million in rehab alone, just to get it ready for the first phase of getting it started, so.
Okay.
And there's no guarantee they're gonna get this money. Again, they have to get the support of the governor's office, local elected officials.
It's California, they'll get that.
Officials.
California. Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving the redevelopment assistance capital program grant applications for urban smart growth in Scranton Commons. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Thanks, George. 18-0042?
Commissioners, with your consent, I could combine 18-0042.
Hang on, I have a question on 42, so no. I would ask that we don't, for 42, I have a question on.
I'll read them, I'll read them individually. 18-0042? Approving a redevelopment assistance capital grant for United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania. Whereas United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania, South Scranton Women's Business Incubator Program entails rehabilitation of the former Penn Security Bank Building to include two additional floors, construction of a business incubator, movement and administrative offices into the building in 530 Cedar Avenue, Scranton. Whereas the county of Lackawanna is ineligible applicant for an RCAP program where United Neighborhood Centers has proposed the county assist United Neighborhood Centers in obtaining this funding from the Commonwealth under the RCAP program. Whereas the county desires to assist United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania to apply for and assist with this program. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairman of the board to sign all documents. Therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file this application on behalf of United Neighborhood Centers for $1,500,000 request to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania for this project.
Go ahead, George.
A little background on this one. They're looking for a million and a half dollars, $1.5 million, for a incubator for women-owned businesses. They're focused more on low and moderate income families to help them create a business. So it's a fostering environment incubator where they have a number of programs that currently reside within UNC. This would complement it.
What is an incubator? What?
They give them a very low-cost space, support services, mentoring.
It's a building?
Phone.
They're calling a building an incubator? Is that what the word is used for?
Yes. Yeah, it's the old bank building that's over there. They're gonna rehab it and then have a place for women to come, take classes on businesses, work with the SBDC.
Can't they just say the building? Why are they calling it an incubator?
It's kind of the, the end term for that. We have a business incubator.
Yeah, well, the leaders, yeah, I know. I know, because all of us, you know, hicks up here in Scranton.
Hopefully, something's gonna grow out of it.
In the description, it says Cedar Avenue, and in their project description, it's calling Scranton's Elm Street area. They calling this Elm Street because of the Elm Street Main Street project, or are they really literally talking about Elm Street?
It's actually on Cedar Avenue, and Cedar Avenue over in South Side has been declared an Elm Street District. It's a, it's a funding district that's out there that has a lot of designated funding, facade programs, facade grants.
Okay.
If you look at the revitalization happen on there, so it's.
I thought they put the wrong street.
Excuse me, you wouldn't wanna walk down those, excuse me, you wouldn't wanna walk down those streets ten years ago.
Yeah.
Now you would.
Sketchy area.
I've walked down there, and I don't like walking down there, I have to tell you, because I went and checked out all these buildings. Um.
Some good restaurants right down there, Commissioner, as you can tell.
I'm, I'm just confused as to why they require more space when the space they already purchased through taxpayer-funded money, they haven't done anything. They built these beautiful buildings, and they can't rent them out. They're just sitting there empty. So why can't they put this into the buildings they already own down there?
It's a decision by their organization.
I know, but then why are we agreeing to, to assist them and supporting them to get a grant to buy more buildings that could possibly still remain empty anyway, when they already have empty buildings?
The bank was donated to them, so they received a donation a couple of years ago on the building, and they've been looking at what's the best use of that building. So they've had it for at least two years now, that building itself, and they've developed all around it except for that building.
Got it. So they're trying to do something with the empty space that they have, is what they're trying to do?
There's actually a branch of the bank there, but it's small. There's a little museum of some.
When I was down there, it was still open, so that must have been, it's still open.
And I think their plans are, from what I've discussed with them, to keep a little branch there while making it offices for UNC, and then freeing up some other space there for other development. I think they're using a doctor's office right now down the block, so they'll move into that.
And it's just amazing how much money this UNC gets from all the different entities throughout the county. I mean, how much money do they get from our county? Do we know? Gary? Do you know any of the, like, how much money that, I mean, George, I, I always see UNC, millions and millions.
They've, they've invested and had partnerships of over $20 million into that Elm Street project. It's been a poster child of how to take a really distressed.
It's all state money, isn't it, basically?
Mostly state money. We give them a little bit of affordable housing money, $15,000 a year for permanent homeless to try to leverage a state.
But the vast majority, the lion's share is apps, is the state, isn't it?
It's stated. It's a little bit of gambling funds, RACP, they've, they've received that in the past.
Gambling funds are included in this?
Not for this one.
Oh, okay.
No, that, that'll be in September. We'll, we'll come back.
I was gonna say.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion approving the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for United Neighborhood Centers of Northeast PA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes. And did you wanna group these together, the rest, because we, we really, we have a prison board meeting.
Steph Rommable, four, three and four, four. Approving the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for Carbondale Area School District and Warford Riverside School District. Authorizing filing of redevelopment capital assistance program with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Carbondale Area School District, which will entail an energy feasibility study and HVAC improvements, and authorizing Warford Riverside School District, which entails also an energy feasibility study, new roof-related energy savings opportunities. Both of these are RCAP grants are applying to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for, and Lackawanna County would be the sponsor. Mr. Kelly?
Each grant request is $500,000 apiece. They're going to be doing facade improvements, repointing the bricks, sidewalk lightings. There's a bathroom in Carbondale, bathroom renovation, too. So they're doing energy savings, trying to put in cost-effective lighting, which would help to pay for the improvements, but they wanna do a little extra work that is non-energy related, but part of the energy project.
Trying to bathroom work in Carbondale. It's not one of those weird bathrooms, is it? It is. They're doing the.
No, it's student, student bathrooms. It's not gonna be pick and choose.
Okay, any other questions?
What's wrong?
I'd like to make a motion for 18-0043 and 18-0044. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, George. 18-0045?
Entering into a maintenance and service agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a maintenance and service agreement with the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute to maintain the SAVN statewide automated victim information notification system for a period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. And our Warden, Tim Betty, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning, Warden Betty.
Good morning. The agreement with SAVN, it's been going on for about 10 years. It's a statewide program that's run by the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute. It's, it's really revolves around victim notification and enhancing victim notification and automated system. We switch off every year with the District Attorney's Office, providing for the funds that are necessary for continuing the SAVN program.
Okay, we, we talked about this at work session. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a maintenance service agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 18-0046?
Entering into a maintenance and service agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a maintenance and service agreement.
Oh, you did that already.
Does enter into an agreement through the County Agriculture Land Preservation Board for the sale and purchase of an agriculture conservation easement with Benjamin and Jessica Carter for 107.56 acres of land in Benton Township. And I believe Mr. Eric Johnson is here to explain the agreement.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Like you said, we're here to look at the conservation easement agreement for Benjamin and Jessica Carter. It's a farm in Benton Township, 107.56 acres for purchase. This will represent the 67th purchase through the county program for over 5,222 acres of farmland in Lackawanna County. On this purchase, it will be a joint purchase between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the county of Lackawanna. 85% purchase will be completed by the Commonwealth, with 15% being by the county, for a total cost of $268,900 for this easement purchase. If there's any questions, I can entertain them.
Okay, we, we talked about this before. Does anybody from the Board have any questions? Thanks for coming in, Eric, first and foremost. I'd like to make a motion entering into an agriculture and conservation easement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks. 18-0054?
Extending the tax bill discount period. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the extension of the discount period for 2018 Lackawanna County real estate taxes be extended from February 28th, 2018 till March 31st, 2018. And after the, I'd be happy to explain the resolution to your Commissioners. The soft, the software which dictates the billing system, there were some glitches in it, and the bills went out late, and we thought it was fair to the taxpayers of Lackawanna County to grant them a 30-day extension on the county real estate taxes. But I repeat, this only affects the county real estate taxes. If other taxing bodies choose to extend their discount period, they would have to do so as governmental bodies on the road. We can't extend it to other taxing bodies.
Okay. Any questions?
I have comments. We talked about this at the last meeting, because Joan, in her infinite wisdom, came up and said, "Where's my tax bill?" And we answered that by saying we will extend a 30, we will have a 30-day extension because they, yes, they were late. And they were late last year, too, as Joan pointed out. So I'm not sure why we got bombarded with phone calls and why there was letters to the editor when it would have been, I mean, maybe next time when we say something that's actually pertinent to the taxpayers' pocketbook, the Scranton Times could report on it so that the letters to the editors, or respond to the letters to the editors at least, to say this was discussed in the last meeting, that the Commissioners are fully intend on providing a 30-day extension due to the fact that the tax bills are late. And I'm, I'm not sure why that wasn't done, but, um, you know, I guess there are priorities. So, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion extending the tax bill discount period. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Can I just say, on the tax bills that we receive, just so that the public takes a note, this is mine. You can take a picture of it. Everybody knows what it is anyway, so, I'll bet. Um, I want you to take notes of these tax bills, because over here, see, up here, it's called 2018 County and Library Real Estate Tax Bill. That's what it's called. But in actuality, there's three separate taxes. County tax, and what they're calling an educational tax, and a library tax. That's your county bill. You have three separate bills. I'm not sure why we're calling it an educational tax when I was told it's arts and culture tax. So, um, that's gonna really have to be decided on. And I think that that's something that, you know, everybody knows I'm against that educational tax, because, you know, I pay property taxes in Old Forge for education. So I'm really not sure why the county has an educational tax. And honestly, I have to wonder if, um, you know, I don't know, maybe the solicitors can answer this, but I mean, we see all the litigation against Scranton City Council on, and the Scranton School Districts or Scranton City on overtaxing. Is this, is this a problem with our 511 as well? Because, I mean, why are we, why are we writing a duplicative tax on education when we already pay that at the local level? This is our county. We don't pay education bills. I'm confused by that. So, and, and then we are utilizing it for an arts and culture area in our county. So what is it? What is the tax? And why are we, what's its purpose? I mean, I, I have no idea. Well, it is the arts and culture. That's what we provide to arts and culture. We hand them $1.3 million. Can you say that on the microphone?
When I, when I got my tax bill, I looked at the same thing. I said, "What the heck is this?"
Yeah.
But I saw no arts and culture. I figured maybe it was a mistake, maybe somebody expanded the definition. But I, I don't know how they could, because that's a separate ordinance. So, so really, i- if it was done, it shouldn't have been done. That's the only explanation I could give.
I pulled out last ones, and they're always different. Sometimes they say arts and education, sometimes they say education and library. I mean, it's always different.
Yeah, it may have been an error with the printer. I.
Well, and, and we have to qualify what that tax actually is, because I get a lot of complaints on it. So, you know, nobody, nobody even knew that this existed until I got here and started talking about it. Thank you.
Okay. 18-0055? Wait a second, we, oh, sorry, roll call, roll call. You vote, okay. 18-0055?
Accepting a proposal from New York Life Insurance Company. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the proposal from New York Life Insurance Company for A and D coverage to commence on April 1st, 2018 at a cost of 25 cents. twenty-five cents and two cents per thousand. And this was previously raised at a January meeting, Commissioners, and we redid the resolution to make the policies consistent with the previous policy. And Director Justin McGregor is here to explain the agreement to you.
Yeah, and the policy had to be changed because of some of the collective bargaining agreement changes. And I'd like to thank the Controller's Office for, for working with us. At the end of the day.
What did you just say?
Sorry?
Are we talking about the same issue?
Yeah, actually, my department sat down with the Controller's Office and kind of went over all the different classes and employees. So I just wanted to thank them for their help on this.
This is the New York Life insurance policy, correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
So now there's a different reason why we're redoing this policy.
No, I'm sorry, Controller.
Well, there was some shortcomings with the original proposal. That could have become a problem.
Andy.
And so.
Not stretching, Garrett.
Okay. So, working with Justin, he went back to New York Life and they had to adjust their original proposal so that coverage for county employees at age sixty-five did not become automatically reduced by thirty-five percent. And county employees who reached the age of seventy, their life insurance coverage did not become automatically reduced by fifty percent. Those reductions weren't originally picked up, but we were able to detect those. That was not the case with Prudential's policy that had been in place, that is in place. New York Life now matched the coverage from the previous policy. And Justin has said that the premiums are lower than Prudential was charging the county. So now the coverage is the same, the premiums are less, and everything looks good to go, Commissioner.
Well, I am sure that if we put this out to bid, we could find multiple companies that would do the same exact thing, but it wasn't. And the excuse that I was told that we were looking for another company is because they weren't living up to their standards and there were multiple complaints that came into the county in regards to claims. So now here in the meeting, it's a completely different story. And I apologize to the Controller because you obviously were not involved in the previous conversations. But, you know, my solicitor was and Mr. Durkin was, and he denied the fact that there was multiple complaints against the original policy that we had. And as I said, I'm sure there's multiple insurance companies out there. I know many of them. You know, I've had many people come in here and talk with Andy because they want to do business with the county, too. But why are we, I mean, why this one? Is there a full disclosure to the fact that, yes, this, the person that currently is in our local area is familiar with our HR guy? And why is Justin dealing with this anyway? Why is Rick Jones not here, the one dealing with this?
Historically, this, historically, the life insurance and the A and D insurance has been administered through our human resource department because it affected all employees. This year has an extra layer of protection. We asked our risk manager, Rick Jones, to review the policy to make certain that the policies would be comparable, that all the coverage would be the same or better. And both of them got together and they came back to us with an analysis, we're going to save additional money. That's the reason we went with New York Life because they were a local company, they were going to save us additional money, and we choose not to bid it at this time.
Who's we that chooses? Because I don't choose and I'm a we, I'm the Commissioner, and I'm not choosing not to bid it. Who's we?
A presentation was made on behalf of HR to show that we could save substantial money.
Correct, thank you, Andy, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that if we put this out for a request for proposal, many insurance companies would offer us a better deal. But the simple fact of the matter is, is I asked why this company, and I was told that it was known, a known friend of our HR director. Am I correct or not?
Commissioner, when this goes back to the original time, it was down to where there weren't a lot of companies that could do this in this type of.
I have two that called me for help.
Commissioner, out of fairness to our HR director, when we went with the program with New York Life last year, our current HR director wasn't even employed by Lackawanna County. So I mean, I understand what you're saying and I respect what you're saying.
We're changing it to a new company currently.
No, no. One of the reasons we went with New York Life is because they came in here last year and they did a voluntary program for all the county employees where people could go out and gain life insurance where they wouldn't have been able to do it. And they did such a good job and we got very good feedback from all the county employees. And they looked at our other policy and they said, we'd be interested in doing this and we could save you, we think we could save you a lot of money. And when they did the analysis on it, they showed us they could save us anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars. In order to put the project out to bid and get it back, we wouldn't have had enough time to get it in for our timeframe through this year. So we choose to do it in a shorter period of time. And it was a professional service and we just went out and we authorized, we asked the Board of Commissioners to authorize it today to save the county ten thousand dollars and the employees would have a better insurance package and it's a local company. But I do understand what you're saying and I respect that. In the future, we will do it differently.
I appreciate the way you have just like contorted your entire body to try and protect the vote on this, Chief of Staff Wallace. However, the simple fact of the matter is, is that, you know, I have a lot of friends in the insurance industry, too. And I'd like to have them come in here and do a presentation, too. And I'd like to apologize to them because they have come to me and have met with you to offer us better services.
That is true.
And they were not given this privilege. So I'm certainly not going to offer the ability to provide a privilege to anybody else. And I'm not happy with the way this was done. And I, I'm not going to shut up about it. And I'm going to talk about it and tell the public exactly where I stand on it. And I think it should be in question. And I think, I think this is happening, I'm just going to say, I'm not happy with this at all. And, you know, every time I see it, I'm just going to bring it out. That's all. That's all I have to say.
I got to bring this up. New York Life came here while former HR Director Brian Lotney was here. You weren't even here where they first stepped foot in this building. So, I mean, that's off the table. They didn't come here because of him. They were already here and they were giving us a free service. So I just want the public to understand that.
But do you see what it looks like to me?
But he didn't, but he didn't bring them in. This started under Director Lotney, which is a year and a half, two years ago.
Cast if anybody knew anyone. And he said, in full disclosure, I know someone. That's, that's what I'm telling you. And.
It's hard not to know anybody in Lackawanna County. Let's put it that way.
I know, that's what I just said. I know many. And I would be appreciative if that was put out for RFP, for other people to give the same opportunity to save the county money as well. But it wasn't, and it isn't.
I got to thank Justin for saving us the amount of money. And like I said, this had nothing to do with you. They were here way before you ever stepped foot in the annexed building. So thank you for your time. And I'd like to make a motion accepting the proposal for the New York Life. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes, thank you. Okay, eighteen dash zero zero five zero.
Yes, these are a series of board appointments. This is during appointment to Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby appoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Attorney Brenda Kobel from Music, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty first, 2021.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lackawanna County Convention Center. Yeah, I'll do the question. And Visitors Bureau. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question?
Other question. I was, I received these appointments yesterday at three o'clock in the afternoon. Not having, had an opportunity. I was totally unaware of it. Commissioner, you can make that face. But that's true. I received this at three o'clock yesterday afternoon. I'm totally unaware of these appointments were coming or who they were going to be.
Sorry about that, Commissioner. I would have told you if I knew that.
Just want to make sure everyone's aware.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
I'm going to abstain.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Yes, eighteen dash zero zero five one.
Appointment to the County of Lackawanna Transit System Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to County of Lackawanna Colts Authority, Brian Dalton, Alpham, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty first, 2022.
I'd like to make the motion to appointment for the County Lackawanna Transit System Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question? Roll call.
I'm going to abstain.
Yes.
Yes, eighteen dash zero zero five two.
An appointment to Lackawanna County Heritage Valley Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, Mr. Thomas De Petro of South Abington Township, term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty first, 2022.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question?
Same.
Roll, roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
I abstain.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Yes, eighteen dash zero zero five three.
To the Lackawanna County Housing Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individuals to Lackawanna County Housing Authority, Mr. Mark Wallace, Carbondale, Pennsylvania, and Mr. James Segalian, Music, Pennsylvania. And prior to voting on this, I just want to make certain the Board of Commissioners know, Mark Wallace is W A L L I S and is no relative of the Chief of Staff, even though I have a son named Mark Wallace, who's also an engineer like this Mark Wallace is an engineer. I want to make certain that that's known.
Great.
Well, I'll make certain that I graduated with James Segalian. I think he'll make a very effective person on this board and that's why I'm in support of it. So I hope that's not a, that's just my opinion and that's why I'm going to vote on it.
I'd like to make a motion to appointments Lackawanna County Housing Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Question?
Other question?
Other question, there are three vacancies in the Lackawanna County Housing Authority now, three on expired terms, expired terms, and we're only appointing two, two people towards, is there a reason or rationale?
We didn't fill all board appointments. There was a recommendation and we receive resumes on these two individuals for this board. Commissioner, if you have a name you want to bring forward or resume, I'll be happy to present it to the Commissioners in a work session for you.
Okay, they get a second? I did a second, okay. Roll call.
I abstain.
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone that actually put in for these positions. I'm sure they'll do a fine job in each and every one of these positions.
They're volunteers.
They're volunteers, it's free. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Hang on a second, is it, is it there yet? Because didn't we have something else to vote on or no?
No, we did. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda-Wan, it's two twenty Linden Street, Scranton. My turn.
Hi, Joan.
Hi. Next Tuesday, February twenty seventh through March fourth, Sunday, Friends of the Scranton Public Library will be conducting its quarterly book sale in support of the Scranton Public Library.
I was there last time. I'm sure that.
I know, they told me.
The book is right out here in the reception area. You can see it.
They told me, however, you two.
They didn't have the bags, they need the bags.
I was sick, I told you, and I was on vacation that week.
Well, you're not sick this week.
Well.
Okay? No excuse, okay? Now, we sell, we sell hardcover and softcover books, DVDs, CDs. You can buy a forty or fifty dollar hardcover book for two dollars. You can't get a better bargain than that. And it's a win-win. You get quality books, DVDs, CDs for a minimal price, and the money all goes to the support of the library. So we'll be outside of the Crunch Fitness Gym, second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown. And if you come on March fourth, the Sunday, and buy a tote bag for five dollars, everything you stuff in it is free.
What is, what day is it, Joan? What day?
Tuesday, February twenty seventh through March, Sunday, March fourth. Okay? It's great, it's a great event, so please come.
And it's all day, it opens at the time of the mall and everything else, okay.
Same hours as the mall. I do want to thank you. I did get my real estate bill. All my taxes are paid, so tonight I can drop dead with clear conscience. Hey, when you're in the military, they train you that way. Get your papers filed, get it done.
I've never met somebody so eager to get their tax bill.
Thanks, Joan.
Now, haven't sat, you know, I have to drink two liters of water every day. And I sat through most, I only have one, one bathroom break. So I sat through all your discussions. Please tell me how much money we paid in those legal fees and how much money in the bills are pending. Does anybody have a number?
We'll try to get your number under the Commissioners.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I don't, I understand the logic and I agree with the logic, but I am curious as to how much money this is costing us.
A lot.
It's very, yeah. I am sure it's six figures.
It's going to be a lot of money. Yeah, it's going to be a very high figure.
Maybe it'll go above six figures, depending on how long this thing drags out.
Yep.
But yeah, I am kind of curious. With regard to the sale of the building, if you do in fact buy that building at, was it thirteen sixty Wyoming Avenue? I'm one of those people that happened to be a victim and had to go to central court. And I got to tell you, I had to go to three hearings. And I'm sitting there.
Yeah.
All these perpetrators sitting around me.
Yeah.
And they play, what did you do? What did you do? They come to me.
They ask you?
Yeah, my perpetrator was right there in the room. I would tell you, you know, like, for me, it was robbery, you know, there was no violence, you know, it was, and I wasn't too emotionally upset. But I could imagine if somebody was a victim of domestic violence or something else, that is so intimidating. So if you don't buy the building, you still got to fix the problem at central court, one way or the other. Either the building purchase or renovate the courthouse area. It's not proper to expect victims to sit next to their perpetrators. It's not right.
Agreed.
You know, and I just don't like that. And that's all I have. But thank you for my tax bill.
You're welcome, Joan.
Make sure there's bags there for the books. They need the bags. Okay, good, good, good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Martina Soden. I'm head of reference services at the Scranton Public Library. And I'm here to talk about an event. It's going to be Wednesday, March twenty first at six thirty PM. We have, the program's called World War One in the Skies, Change Comes to the Art of War with William Fisher, Jr. He's a military historian and retired Air Force officer. William Fisher, Jr. explains how aviation evolved from aerial observation to bombing in actual combat in the skies above France. And it'll be a great program, just so anybody can show up at the Albright Memorial Library. And that again is Wednesday, March twenty first at six thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have a date, but the renovations look wonderful.
I saw some things in the paper, some pictures. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Cummings?
So there's been a lot of reports on the, regarding the prison and the current AG So, there's been a lot of reports on the, regarding the prison and the current AG investigation that had been requested by us, as just talked about in, in this meeting tonight, or today. Um, the AG himself, as I read, considered the situation one that has been a problem for many years and actually, uh, read what he referred it to. I'm not sure I agree with what the AG describes as, as the situation of corruption. I'm not sure I agree with all that. It is a prison. You know, I mean, it's a prison. Um, but one thing I'm surely sick and tired of hearing about is the consistent issues that occur at the prison. It's constant. It's just a constant problem. For years, it didn't just happen with this administration or the previous administration or the previous administration. It's a prison. It happens every year consistently. If, if they miss a year, it's, you know, a celebration. But, um, you know, I'm really glad that the media and the AG and the public finally seem to all agree that it's a problem. It's a problem. And I think, um, it's time. It's just high time that we privatize the prison. I'm looking forward to hearing from CoreCivic, along with many others that have already, um, you know, asked us to address the situation and, um, you know, look into it as well. So, I hope we find some solutions there. Um, there's multiple areas that can be helped. It doesn't have to be a full privatization, it could be purchase of the building. I mean, they, they were describing to us a couple of different areas that they might be able to help us in. And I, I look forward to hearing that, uh, presentation, uh, within the next week or two. Um, they've already brought out one important fact that has not been addressed before, and that is that our legal fees associated with the prison, um, are not taken into account under the prison, under the prison's budget. When, when we see the budget, it's not listed in our budget. Um, they're listed under, uh, what office?
Solicitors' fees.
Yeah.
And contracts under, uh, special services.
So, one thing I would request, um, Chief of Staff Wallace, is a rundown, and maybe Tom can help us with this, as to the actual costs of litigation the prison has cost us over the years or, um, you know, in addition to the current budget that we already have.
We'll provide that for you. We'll ask Tom Durkin to get it together.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I'll get it for you over the last, last five years? Acceptable?
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I think that's something that, uh, is important for the public to know as well.
Tom, is that doable, the last five years, legal services?
I, I think that Rick Jones would be more appropriate.
Okay.
He can identify--
Okay.
--what the legal services were paid for. All I have is the information in our financial system.
Okay, we'll get together, we'll get the information. Thank you, Tom. We'll get together with Rick Jones to, where--
Legal fees for civil actions and possible settlements paid, correct?
Okay. Civil actions and, what is it, civil actions and settlements?
Yeah, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, we'll get it for you.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, and that's something that we need to look at in addition to the current budget that we have. Um, because we aren't looking at that now when we're budgeting and we're already, I mean, the taxpayers are in it for 20 million. They don't get any reimbursements. We get $7 million back from the Fed and state. The prison cost us, on average, 27 million. We get 7 million back in grants from the state and feds, and the rest is all on the public, $20 million. Um, that's a lot of money, uh, to the taxpayers, and, um, it's a lot of, I mean, look at, look at every day that it's been in the papers. I mean, it's always in the papers. We have progressive women come into our meetings at the prison all the time, um, addressing issues. Um, it, it's just something that, um, I think it's high time it's privatized. Um, I do have, uh, something I'd like to, uh, bring to light with the taxpayers. We have, um, cabinet meetings every, uh, month with all the department heads, and, um, I'm not going to go into detail right now, but what I will say is, um, I believe there's, uh, some departments that are completely overstepping their bounds. And, um, there's some issues that are coming up that, um, we were made aware of, and, um, I will be talking about them. I just wanna make sure that both Commissioners know that in advance so that they can decide what they, because I don't wanna just throw something at them that we weren't talking about. I mean, Commissioner Nateriani, um, was there at the meeting, but Commissioner O'Malley had to leave at the end. And, uh, I would like to, the opportunity to discuss that in an executive session at some point or in our work session, um, because I believe it's a major problem and, um, it needs to be reined in. So, um, thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Nateriani?
Uh, I did receive the, uh, an answer from John Brazil and the other attorneys here today pertaining to the, uh, legal bills. Uh, I'm, I'm not fully satisfied with the answers. Uh, I will check into them further. Uh, it's, uh, to jump to your answer, we have spent over $150,000 so far.
And counting.
And counting.
And so am I.